Welcome to the Bossier City Council meeting today, June the twenty, June the nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen at three P. M. We have the call to order, the invocation by Councilmember Scott Erwin, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. Lord, we pray for Bossier City, Lord, and that you'll just give us wisdom in this council meeting today to help our city be a success. Lord, we pray for those among us who are sick or hurting, and, Lord, we pray for our military stationed around the world and here at home. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Erwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Share in a motion to approve agenda. There's no add-ons?
First, I need to approve the minutes.
Oh, approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a second, please, to cast your vote?
Now the agenda.
Okay.
There are no add-ons.
No add-ons. Motion to approve agenda is written.
Like that motion.
Okay, thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, how say you on the agenda?
Again?
Are you on the agenda?
Yay.
Yay, okay. Unanimous. Ceremony matters here today, any?
No, sir.
Do we have any special guests?
Bossier Youth Leadership student?
Okay, if there are those who are part of Bossier Youth Leadership, you may stand and give your name and your school.
Hi, I'm Shannon Andrews. Can I go to Airline High School? I'm down low at the turn signal. I'll serve at Airline.
Welcome, both of you. Thank you for being here. This is a formal meeting. We will vote on those things that are on the agenda, and you're welcome to give your comments each time we get to an item. The monitor or the board will show our vote cast, so hopefully you'll learn something and walk away, and one day you'll sit in one of these seats, hopefully on the end. That's the mayor's seat. Okay, we have other students coming in? Okay, okay, we won't start without you. So the four of you may stand and give us your names and your school.
My name's Greg Ross. I'm at Airline High School.
I'm Hannah Campbell. I go to Airline High School.
I'm Lucy Wade. I go to Airline High School.
I'm Bailey Balkan. I go to Airline High School.
Fantastic. All Airline High School students, thank you for being here. Okay, any other guests today? All right, fantastic, thank you so much. We are committed reports, starting with Mark Hudson.
Mark Hudson, City Engineer, a monthly project update.
Council Wimple Road is coming along really well. Should be finished the first week of July. Shed Road, sixty-five percent of the work's done, ninety-nine percent of the contract time has expired. They're supposed to be finished in about twenty days. Zero chance. They had a good pour last night. They're working real hard, but they're way behind schedule.
What's the ramification for that?
Sir?
What's the ramification for not being done on your?
Their charge's nine hundred and seventy-five dollars a day.
Outstanding.
Have they gone to a twenty-four hour yet?
They never did. They brought in extra crews, and if you drive down Shed Road, which is not easy to do, you see a lot of activity, but too little, too late to be finished on time. The Brownlee Turn Lane, there's an item on the agenda today to appropriate the extra money. I hope you approve that. If you do, I'll contact that contractor tomorrow. They're eager to get started.
That's the same contractor that's doing Wimple?
No, sir. Our low bidder was C. W. and W. They're a good outfit.
Okay.
Just so you know, you guys took that, those bids under advisement, so you would have to vote to accept the bids, accept the rating of the bids in order to keep going forward.
The U. S. Seventy-one Sunflower Right Turn Lane in Councilman Erwin's district, I'll have those plans next week. D. O. T. D.'s preparing those for us, and I'll put that out to bid. Coleman Street, in the downtown area, it's coming along well. We have a conference call Thursday with D. O. T. D. There's federal money involved, so we have a conference call Thursday to kind of bring everybody up to speed and discuss some environmental issues. It's moving slow, like all things with federal money involved, but it's, it's coming along.
Is that still going to be just a blacktop down there, or what?
It's going to be an asphalt pavement with concrete curb and gutter, underground drainage, nice wide sidewalks, some trees. Viking Drive, federal money involved there. We're sixty percent finished with our plans, and right now the plans are being reviewed by D. O. T. D., including some environmental issues. We're hoping to get a categorical exclusion, so we don't need to be so concerned with environmental issues. Innovation Drive, the Corps of Engineers was here just last Thursday. They walked the route from one end to the other, and they tell me they were going back to their shop to do what they do. They more or less agreed with the wetlands assessment that we had already had prepared, and they tell me it should be out for public comments in two, two, four weeks. I still expect approval to be, at this point in time, about ninety days away. The U. S. Eighty highway improvements, that section of the Walter Bigby Carriage Way, just got my permit from D. O. T. D. this morning, and that's, that's a big deal. Pam still is working some right-of-way issues, and, and of course, the local utility companies are still relocating, but they've initiated or they're about to initiate their efforts to do that. The Walter Bigby Carriage Way is just rocking along. I still expect my plans the fourth quarter of this year. There's an item on the agenda today, that extra money to revise the plans for the bridge, so we can sneak that little access road underneath the bridge. I hope you approve that. Gary Nethery, our Public Works Director, is quarterbacking a project to rebuild North Hardwick and Glenhaven. Those are residential streets in Green Acres Place. In fact, that's why he's not here today. He's out there getting things ready for the contractor who's supposed to show up any day now. The one I know you're all curious about, the Airline Drive, Kansas City Southern Underpass.
I'm all curious about that.
Our consultants are working on that. They're accumulating data. They've, they've already checked in with D. O. T. D. They're talking to Kansas City Southern. They're just gathering information before they complete their study.
Before they come back and want more money, you mean?
Sir?
Before they come back and want more money?
Before they come back and want, God, more money.
Just say it, man.
Yeah. Out at the arena, if you've driven down the parkway, you'll see the signs, the marquee signs being replaced and repaired. It's going to be fabulous. The improvements to the interior are underway. We picked out some really cool new colors. You're going to love them. The kitchen equipment's been ordered, and I think next week I should have a little project out to do some repairs in the parking lot.
What about cleaning it?
That's ongoing. That's part of the, the outside of the building is, was, is not part of the program. Recall, we decided we wanted to put a new roof on it before we cleaned it. So the new roof needs to come first.
When is that coming?
I think a good time for a new roof would be next year, next summer. The roof's in, still got some life left in it, and might as well.
But, I mean, the building's looking worse and worse.
Well, that's something, uh...
You know, it just, it's a reflection, you know?
Yes, sir. Well, I'll tell you what. I'll look into it and see what's involved.
Would you please?
Yes, sir, I will.
Where are the new colors?
Pardon me?
What's the new colors?
Well, it's along the corridor, as you walk around the building, you know what color they are now?
Purple and gold?
Purple and gold. No, they're purple and white, but it's hideous. I mean, it was cool twenty years ago. It's not anymore now. And we've actually picked out a yellow and a blue that looks very, very nice. It's a, it's a kind of a navy blue and a yellow, and it looks nice. And a group has studied hard on it, and we like it. At Boardwalk, we're continuing repairs to the seawall. I've issued a purchase order to fix the signs inside the garage, and we've selected a striper to re-stripe the Bass Pro parking lot, the other big parking lot across from it, and some of the streets around Boardwalk. Here at City Hall, we're going to replace the sidewalks. We're going to start that next week. And lastly, down at the East Bank District, we're going to start installing the new plans within a week. And if you've got any questions?
Mark, I talked to you a little bit about the sidewalks here. When we filled in that water, the sidewalks don't really lead properly right now to the parking lot. Are we going to make some revisions to our sidewalks so that they...
You mentioned that to me, and, and there's ample money to make some changes and add to it.
Okay. I think now would be the time.
Once we get started, you and I'll get out there and we'll decide what, what we need to do.
One quick question. You said Shed Road's sixty-five percent complete. Is there an estimated date? You, you had said December. Still a target?
The estimated date varies depending on who you talk to, and that's why I just hate saying it, because, you know, the latest I ever heard was January of next year. And a- actually, the contractor told me he was going to mail me a revised schedule, email me this afternoon. I haven't, hadn't opened it up to look at it yet, but I'm sure there's a date on there.
So all these rain days are figured in, and so now they're starting to pay nine, whatever you said, fifty-five?
They were given, there was a change order issued today that added twelve days to their contract. Their contract was going to expire, I think, in about five days. So, you know, we're seventeen-ish days off before their contract runs up.
Is it going to open two-way real soon from Doctor's Drive to Airline, or is that going to stay one-way?
That's another date. I hate to keep telling you guys, but since you ask, they told me July nineteenth is when we're supposed to have two ways of traffic in front of Casillas.
Well, yeah, because I drove by there last night. At least they got the road done to the driveways for Chaparral and the dentist there at Casillas, so, possible.
Everybody's always had access. It's just hasn't been convenient.
Right. Ben, after, would you, after Mark, would you come up and talk to, talk to me about Waller?
Thanks, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Yes, sir.
How's it going, or what's, or what's going on out there now?
We, right now, it's gravel that's out there on Waller, right there on that intersection. I talked to the contractor before. I've been away for a couple of weeks. We wanted to let the ground settle before we got back in and put the asphalt in. Talked to my utility manager this morning about that. I don't have a date for you, but, but I would expect that to be done by the end of next week, if not earlier. It's, it's on our radar to get it done. I know the folks out there are tired of driving on gravel roads, so, and we're anxious to, to button it up.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next is Ms. Fernandez, our Financial Director.
Good afternoon, Council. I've distributed the financial reports for May of two thousand and eighteen. Page one is our revenues. We're at a hundred and thirteen percent of budget, which the dental fund portion is a hundred and five percent, so it's favorable. Page two, the expenses, we're at ninety-two percent, also favorable. Page three is our sales tax, our collections year-to-date, our one-point-four favorable, or seven-point-two percent over prior year. Page four is our manning report. We're actually up to six-seventy-two, which is fifteen more than last month, but still twenty under budget. And lastly, our water and sewer reports. The month is kind of skewed a little bit, but to budget in the rolling twelve months, we're still doing very well, at a hundred and six percent on the rolling twelve months. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
What's the, what's the two thousand and eighteen budget year-to-date at the bottom, the three thousand one hundred and fifteen percent?
It's actually positive. We're doing three thousand one hundred and fifteen percent better than budget.
One fifteen.
The actual year-to-date is two million, two ninety-four, and the budget was only seventy-three thousand.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tad Hammerchun? Hello.
I have a PowerPoint presentation. I'll run through that and give you an update. I'll go pretty quickly and give some high level. If you have questions, feel free to interrupt me. I'd be happy to give you details. Thanks again for letting me be here and assist you with your I. T. operations. I'll cover key stats, daily operations, projects completed, and projects in process. The key stats, if you look at the first three, they're important because that's your, your customers. You have twenty-eight locations, thirty departments, six-hundred-plus end-users. If you look at the next numbers, that's what they use to support those customers. An eight-hundred megahertz radio system, the state system, and cellular system, fifty-plus circuits that make up your wide-area network, twelve phone systems, two data centers, two major compute storage systems. That's a real critical piece right there. Seventy-five-plus applications, that's all the software that sits on top of your two major systems that operates things. Thirty-plus equipment rooms, network closets. Those are spread out over the twenty-eight location, and then over seventeen-hundred end-user devices. If we look at daily operations, I know I'm here mainly to look at projects and get things moving forward, but you've got to keep the city running. So, daily operations, you have daily system monitoring that your staff has to come in, look at your systems. They have to do some system administration, add a user, delete a user, add some additional disk space, those type things. Then there's larger items that they have to do of system maintenance or updates that come along. Those might require an outage, require work at night or something. Backups, those are critical. They have to monitor them every day, make sure backups happen. Help desk, end-user support, daily, supporting the six-hundred-plus users. Once all of that is complete, then if they have some time, they do some training. This could consist of reading one little thing, you know, for ten minutes one day, or it could consist of going off to a class for a week. Then we get into the projects and strategic planning and technology reviews. So it's a, it's a busy, busy world in your city and the information services.
This is, this is what our I. T. guys are doing daily, which is your show?
Yes, sir. To explain that a little bit further, this is your, your information services infrastructure. I'm going to start at the bottom, client systems. That's, that's what the six-hundred users are, are holding. Either a PC or a laptop or tablets or smartphones, or you have cameras that are connected back into the network in the middle. The network consists of firewalls, router switches, cabling, I. P. management. That's all the addressing scheme and how everything communicates to each other, and then Wi-Fi. And then back up at the top, it connects to all your critical servers or system, your big major boxes and disk space. You have an I. B. M. A. S. four hundred that has some products running on it. Then you have a VMware environment, phone systems, and then a surveillance system. Those are your big backend system. We'll get into projects completed. I just, first item I spoke to about operational support. When I'm here each week, I will sit down with Bill and team. We will go over operational. Are there any things that they're having problems with that, that needs to be addressed or issues? Are they doing the system administrator things? Are they making sure backup's done? We'll, we'll address that. And then we go through all the projects and, and work through those things. Other things we've completed in the city council chambers here, you now have a new high-definition video system. Bossiercity.org, new website, was moved to a new hosting vendor and has been updated. Generator test for the municipal complex. You have five generators here. A lot of people kind of knew what went on, sort of knew what went on when the electricity went off, but we ran a test. We actually shut down commercial power, saw which generator come on, shut down that generator, see which generators downstream of that. And then in turn, we updated the electrical schematic, so that, something I'll speak to later, in the data center, we want to have dual power feeds, so that the computer systems get a power feed A and a power feed B. By doing this test and updating that, we were able to get it down and get the schematic for that. Relocated a network hub in the fire department that was near water. Data center courtyard, fiber connectivity and entrance. I'll show you some pictures of this, but it's some areas I noted that we need to improve security, and Mark Hudson and team helped, helped fix that. Local data center versus colocation facility and cloud research. We went through and looked, did it make sense to redo your data center here, or should we move it to the cloud, or should we do colocation? Cloud was not the option we chose because you had just invested in new computing and storage. The colocation facility is where you take your new computing and storage and you go put it in somebody else's facility. That was not a viable thing because that takes operational dollars versus capital dollars. And at the time, it was a preference to spend the capital over the operational. So we stuck with overhauling the local data center here, and I think it'll pay you good dividends, and I'll get into that more later. High availability, I looked at single points of failure, where, where if one item went down, you were down. And we improved some of those already. High availability for the core network and your firewall, that's already in place. Payment card industry, data security standards, that's an annual review that you have to do. It's about a hundred and fifty questions that you have to go through and answer. We completed that. And then a cybersecurity risk insurance application, I was called and asked to review that and assist with that. I've done that at previous companies, and I assisted with that process. Review and update of a new surveillance camera system for jail, police, and evidence. That project was over a year old, so it needed to be reviewed and repriced. I worked with the vendor on that. They repriced it. We did a gross savings of over fifty thousand dollars, and then reinvested some of that to make the system a little more resilient, a little more robust. Reinvested eighteen thousand, but still had a net improvement of thirty-four thousand. Staffing, additional staff has been hired, but we did the assessments, created new job descriptions, salary ranges, went through an ordinance process, recruited, and then interviews and hired, and those people are on board and, and moving forward. It's been a great benefit to Bill and team. Police and fire has a major project, a new CAD system that's moving from the I. B. M. system over to the U. C., Cisco UCS chassis, V. M. World. The infrastructure portion of that has been completed, and then there's still some daily support going. Very minimal on my part, but Bill and team have, have items there. A couple of pictures of some of the things I just spoke of. One, security, defense-in-depth strategy. This is a little hard to read, I apologize, but in addition to this drawing, I created a document for you that provides your city's defense-in-depth strategy. It's a strategy so that in the event you need to explain to somebody, your audits ask for, what is your security strategy, you're able to explain to them. If you start in the middle with this, that first red dot is your data. That's your data, that's customer data. That's the most important thing you have to protect. You can do data encryption, you can minimize the data, you can limit user access, and you can store your backups on and off-site. The next red circle going out is daily operations. You don't want the, the bad guys coming in and interrupting your daily operations through a denial-of-service attack or something like that. So these other items, passwords, software updates, intrusion detection, end-user security training, antivirus, spyware, malware, internet and email phishing, firewall and access control, disaster recovery, physical security. Those are all items you have in place. Now, they're not all at the level they need to be at. They're, some are basic, some, some are at the level they need to be at, but it's something we work at and add into the mix of always addressing security in each area and seeing how we can improve it in each one of these levels. Very, very important item. One of the items in there is in-user training. Let me, I'll speak to that in just a minute. I spoke to the data center courtyard. Inside this bricked-in area is your generator, your diesel fuel tank, and your automatic transfer switches for your data center. There was a lot of exposure. I recommended we come in with bollards, that's metal posts concreted in, to protect that area, along with, along the top, the fencing has been in to control access and help, help protect that. Another item. It'll move. This was a glass door entrance, a side entrance. Changed that to a metal door. And then at the corner of the building, where your connectivity come in from the outside, this fence was not there. The box was not locked by the vendor. Vandalism could easily occur, so this helps control that, which provides for your E-nine-one-one internet connectivity, mobile connectivity. So just another area to look at, some things observed, and we fixed. Let me talk about the network for a minute. When I got here, this line connects your internet, this is your internet right here, and all your mobile receiving data come through this internet and this firewall. This is your, where we are in this municipal facility. This is your D. R. site. You had one path, one firewall, one connectivity to the D. R. site. After the water event, this main broadband circuit was created, was put in to join in your disaster recovery site, and that improved the performance at the disaster recovery site. Over here, since I got here, we added a second firewall. Prior to this, if one firewall was, was hit or taken down or need to be upgraded, you were just down. The police, fire, their end-user devices did not get data. And so this provides you the ability to take down one of these, do an upgrade, move over to the other one while you're doing that, and then move back if you need to. So best, best practice is in the industry called high availability to eliminate a single point of failure. point of failure. There's some more in process on this that I'll show you in a minute. The, now we get into projects in process. Operational support, again, that's just the ongoing stuff to keep everything running while we do address other issues. Again, you got a great team, Bill does a outstanding job juggling all the things that he has on his plate. Security training for all employees, we researched, looked for a product, looked for what's the most efficient cost, but does the best training, we found a product that's really good, it has just recently been deployed, you already have in-users that are taking it and, and getting training, it, it's a process, you click on a link, create a login, and you can watch a short tutorial or a short video on security, what's the best practice on security. We'll be able to ship out those once a week, once a month, as needed, and it also has a feature to ship out a test, like a phishing test, seeing how many people will click on a link and they shouldn't, and then tell you which users did that. So, it does both training and, and the other, so a very good add. This ties back in, by the way, to your PCI credit card security and to your cybersecurity application that in order for those to be done, you have to say, hey, we train all employees. So, you had some training before, kinda random, this helps to formalize that process and make it more solid, and you can actually say, yeah, we trained them, and here's proof that we trained them. Generator and automatic transfer training and run book, inside that courtyard that we talked about, there's three automatic transfer switches, the generator, there's some various buttons on there, wanna get in more detail, create a run book so that you're not having to look for the person that really understands how to do it, there's a simple instruction book if you wanna do some testing and, and do that. Network closet control, one of the things I found when you had all these thirty-plus network closets that's connectivity, they underkey, but a lot of people have key, a lot of people need access, and you don't have the control that you need. So, there, Bill already had a piece of software that come with your disaster recovery site that we could put in new UPSs, that's an uninterruptible power supply, it's a battery backup, in the bottom of the, the post rack in that room, we can tie a camera to it, it has environmental monitoring probes, so, once this is complete, he will be able to get alerts if temperature's getting high, if somebody goes in the room, it takes a snapshot, sends him an email who's gone in that room, and it gives him a lot more control of what's going on in the network. Back to that picture that I showed you, if the network's down, everything's down. You know, if one PC's down, that's just one PC, if one server's down, that's just one server, that, that creates, a lot of people can't use that one server, but the network's down, everybody's impacted. Okay, the data center overhaul, I will discuss that, I'll show you some pictures and discuss that a little further in just a moment, but it involved cleaning out items and moving all the physical boxes that were in. Bill had just begun before the, the incident to start going from physical to virtual, and after that, a big push went in to move everything virtual into another device. The engineering design work is complete and that's been released for bids. The DR site, we're looking to improve the internet connectivity circuit, firewalls, the communications, the IP, how all of that communication works in the event of a failover, need to do more planning, testing and documentation, need to still upgrade the wireless canopy wide area network, we've done some preliminary engineering looks at that with some vendors, but we, we've, that's been pushed back while we worked on some other stuff. Backup circuits and firewalls for remote sites, your fire stations, your remote sites, your utilities, there's one path to get there, if that path goes down, they're down. So, we have a, a fairly inexpensive way of creating a backup circuit to those sites that's gonna be very beneficial. And then PC imaging, today, PCs are installed step by step by step, one at a time, and it may take one to two days. Once this is completed with this piece of software, ninety percent of it will be loaded on a new PC in about ten minutes, and then the rest of the installation occur within an hour. So, it'll make a huge difference in use of technology. The fire department has an alerting system called Zetron, we need to update that, continue to support the fire, police and fire CAD system, and then documentations on policy and procedures. Again, a lot of things are done, but they're not formally documented, and that's what auditors look for, is, okay, you say you're doing it, but where is your documentation and your policy that you have to do it this way, and where's the proof that you're doing it that way? Some more details on this, if you remember back, the very first drawing showed this one link, showed one link, that, one firewall here, we've added in this firewall, this thing, now we're starting to focus on the disaster recovery site where we're gonna have a third firewall. If this center went away, you would switch to this one, and you would have a firewall there, and you would have internet connectivity. Prior to this, you had one very small connection, but it was not sufficient and no firewall to have connectivity. During your incident, you were lucky that this portion went down just over the weekend, and then they were able to get that back up. So, you worked at your DR site, but you came back across either this link or this link and worked with that route. So, we're working so that in the event something happens here, you can have full of capability at your DR site. And the next step, in the middle, it's, it's kinda hard to draw how it all comes together, but this is your remote site, this is the twenty-eight different locations, fire stations and everything. Currently, they have one connectivity, we're gonna add this in so that they, either from this place or this place, they have two paths, and create a firewall at each one of those. That's just another small internet connection with a small device because they don't need a, a large one like, like at these locations, so, that, that picture at the end of the day will be eliminate single points of failure and be a, a lot more resilient and highly available. It's not to say you won't have a problem, but you've tremendously reduced your risk and increased your uptime availability. On the data center before, this is a picture with the ceiling having fallout due to water, water down here, water all here, water in the subfloor, in this rack, I didn't bother to put up a bunch of pictures of water on computer equipment and all of that, but there's about five racks right in here that had computer equipment and wet, that... It'll go forward here. This is how it looks today, this area's been cleaned out, all of the equipment that was in this row of racks right here has been moved outside to this temporarily. Part of your operations is still occurring at your DR site and coming back across the line, and then the other part is in here, and then we just moved this device out, it's your older surveillance system, getting it out of the way so that all of this can be remodeled. And then, where we're trying to get to, the new data center plan is gonna have power, before you had one power feed, one generator, one, one battery backup, we're gonna have two. That's industry best practice, it puts you at another tier rating to, if, if you lose commercial power and lose one generator, you still have another generator coming in because, all the computers have two power supplies in the back of them, so you can bring a A feed and a B feed in. In the new environment, you'll have up to thirty kilowatts power, you're at about ten kilowatts power, a little under right now, so you'll have room for growth, six equipment racks, you'll only have about three used up initially, so you'll have room for growth there. Air conditioning, two data center floor units, currently, the air conditioners are in the ceiling, I've never seen that before, these will provide better airflow, better maintenance. Before, your, your computer equipment generates heat going out the back of it and going up, and your air conditioners were sitting up blowing that heat back down on them, so it just didn't make for the proper airflow. These will sit to the side and blow air out, blow air through the computers, will go up, will go through the fault ceiling, using it as a plenum and then come back down and to the return air where you get a lot better efficiency in cooling. Fire suppression, there's currently none, there will be in the new one, increased security and monitoring, you actually have windows in your data center that nobody had ever noticed being an issue, we're gonna cover those with some steel and wall up on the inside to provide more security. The walls are, are not hardened, we're gonna harden the walls better and, and raise them all the way to the ceiling and improve that. You could've taken a ladder and climbed over the wall into the data center prior. And then, increased system redundancy, once we get out of where we are today in a temporary mode, move that over, then we'll add some more redundancy, eliminating some single points of failure. And the end result, this is a picture, but this is what we plan for it to look like, your air conditioning unit will look like this, instead of be hanging in the ceiling, airflow will come out, go into these units, it'll come out of here, up in the ceiling will be an open grid that will allow the heat to go out, come across, and then come back down into the top of the air conditioning. This is a picture of your disaster recovery site, this is a smart row, made no modifications to this, this is excellent, this is what you had prior, so we're gonna make this one here look like that. Again, part of your operations is currently operating at that facility and doing well. That's my update, any questions?
Thank you. I'm sure every council member took some notes, anything for Mr. Hamilton?
Dad?
Yes, sir.
When, when your contract's up in this year, December, will our, not Mitchelone, will our IT department be able to go, go more ahead?
Absolutely, they, they can carry it, but you, one of the things, my role is different to their roles. You, you have a great manager in Bill, Bill wears like three hats, if you put in a relationship with the restaurant industry maybe, he's the general manager, he's the head chef, and sometimes he's waiting tables. So, he's doing all three of those, he's very tactically focused. If he had another system administrator to take over his administrative duties, he could focus more on the manager and some of the stuff that I'm doing. My focus is more strategic in nature, Bill's is more tactical in nature. My, Bill's focusing on doing the, the right, doing things right, and I'm more focused on what are the right things to be doing. So, it's, it's a different role, but Bill is, he's, again, he does a great job, but some of the things I pointed out, he's absorbing, I see him looking at things at a different role, but your IT services operation has grown to the point that having a person that looks at things from a strategic point of view, I think is still something you might consider beneficial for, for the city.
Thank you so much, anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
Unfinished business.
Adopt and ordinance appropriating twelve thousand three hundred dollars from the 2018 Riverboat Capital Projects Fund to hire Mike McSwain architect to provide exterior conceptual designs that fit the North Bozeman Campus, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? The floor is open for comments. Council please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams and Mr. Larkin. Adopt and ordinance to appropriate funds to purchase a trackhoe and a crane truck for the use within the utility department at a cost of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to come from the Water and Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? And to the students, this is the time, if you want to comment on each item, you can come before the podium here and make your comments. Any takers? All right. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby, is your light still flashing? Mr. Irwin?
It's not flashing.
Adopt and ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign all documents for the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing Permit required for the Shed Road to Airline forty-two inch Water Main Extension Project, and authorizes the payment of licensee fee from the Water Capital Improvement Assessment Fund, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt and ordinance repealing ordinance number one fifty-three of nineteen ninety-four and replacing with revised ordinance authorizing the city of Bozeman City, Louisiana Department of Public Utilities Environmental Affairs Division to prevent the introduction of excessive amounts of fats, oils and grease into the city's publicly-owned treatment works, which includes the sewer collection lines, lifts, sewer lift stations and wastewater treatment facilities, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
End of discussion. Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt and ordinance to appropriate seventy-six thousand seventeen dollars to come from the twenty-fifteen LCDA bond fund to be used to supplement the already appropriated three million four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for the design and survey of the Walter O Big B Carriage Way, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt and ordinance to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to come from the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund to supplement the hundred and sixty thousand dollars already appropriated for the development of a Brownlee Road at Airline Drive Right Turn Lane, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hudson brought us up to date on this one. Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote. And you want to?
Mr. Free.
We need to, I'd like to, can I amend the agenda now?
Yeah, I need you to vote, thank you.
Accept reading of?
Do we make a motion to approve the reading of the bids?
Yeah.
Yes.
We need to amend the agenda to include that item.
I'd like to amend the agenda to add approved reading of the Brownlee Road bids.
Some, second.
Back on May fifteenth, we opened these bids, and we have forty-five days to award them, and it's only been thirty-four, so I can repeat the amounts if that will be helpful.
Good.
It's on record, I think, we have, we have it already.
Then ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
So, Mr. Williams made the motion, Mr. Montgomery's second already?
Right, to amend the agenda.
Add the agenda to include the?
So, let's vote, let's vote on that to amend. Please cast your vote, council.
Didn't make the?
Now, we need to motion.
Make the motion to?
As a recommendation to accept the bids.
Well, to, we vote on the agenda's amended, right?
Yes.
So, I make the motion, we accept the agenda's amended.
Second. Please, please cast your vote.
Now, we're down to that.
Okay.
Now, do we make a motion to accept the?
Reading of the bids.
Reading of the bids. I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any, anyone else? Please cast your vote.
Now, we're gonna have a test on that.
Did y'all understand it all?
At the end of this meeting, I wanted y'all to be sure you're making notes, right? Right, Mr. Darby?
That's right. We're gonna give you scores.
But you don't have to pass the test.
Item seven?
Have we voted on six?
Yeah.
We did?
You made the motion.
Okay.
Yes, y'all voted on it.
All right.
And so, now we're on item number seven. Adopt and ordinance to authorize the city to enter into a purchase order contract with B&amp;G Lawn Maintenance LLC to provide professional landscape maintenance for the area known as the East Bank District and Plaza.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt and ordinance to appropriate fifty thousand dollars from the twenty-eighteen EMS Capital Contingency Fund to purchase support equipment and supplies for the emergency medical services, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, council.
Adopt and ordinance to appropriate funds to replace and add security fencing around the reservoir at the water treatment plant at a cost of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to come from the Water Contingency Fund.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Please cast your vote.
Adopt and ordinance to amend the twenty-eighteen operating budget and operate, appropriate twelve thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and twenty... appropriate twelve thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents from the General Fund fund balance to the Human Resources Department 2018 operating budget for charging and off, changing an office manager to, to a risk management specialist. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
Let me, let me go back. Di- did we do item nine? We missed number nine. Yeah.
I have a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Irwin. I just, I started reading number ten before I displayed the votes, but then I displayed the votes.
Okay. I sorta missed that, I guess.
One point one million. It was a motion by Mr. Montgomery and a second by Mr. Irwin.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I, I, I think I haven't seen your moment. I missed it.
It's going so fast through there.
Okay.
I tried to read the next one before I displayed the vote.
Okay. So, we're at item ten?
We're, we're at item number eleven.
Eleven. Okay. Now, we're at eleven. Okay.
And I have a motion by Mr. Irwin and a second by Mr. Montgomery for item number eleven.
Okay. All right. So, that's why we have a city clerk. She keeps us in line. Any comments on that item? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Okay, that's number nine up there, but we're on eleven.
That's number ten up there.
That's some...
Yeah, one ten, one eleven.
Okay, there it is. Okay.
Okay. All right, now, vote on that item. Number eleven. Item carries.
We're really starting to look bad in front of our students.
Introduce an ordinance...
It's usually worse, okay?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion number twelve to continue to our next regular meeting.
Okay. What date will that be?
July third.
July third. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Have a motion to continue number, number twelve to next meeting in a second. Anyone would like to comment on that? Okay, please cast your vote.
New business. Thank goodness. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property which is required for the right of way and all necessary property utility servitudes for the following projects, the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Project and the Walter O. Bigby Waterline Relocation Project and the Shed Road to Airline Drive forty-two inch Water Main Relocation Project. First reading.
Some move. Second.
Discussion. Comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance adopting and enacting an amended Unified Development Code for the Bossier City Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission and the City of Bossier City, Louisiana, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances, providing for a penalty for violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective. Motion. Second.
Some move. Second.
Gentlemen, today, uh, I would ask that you would, uh, accommodate me and remand this back to the MPC for some further review. In the last few days, I've had some conversations with some local businesspeople, and they had some pretty good ideas that I'd like to pursue with the MPC board at our meeting on Monday and possibly add some, uh, more changes to this code and adopt it as a full document instead of amendment after amendment after amendment. And, uh, I think...
So, what do we do on this?
Just need to vote to remand it back to the MPC.
All right, I make the motion that we remand it back to the MPC. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Go back to the MPC.
Thank you. Since we have remanded that back, I would lo- like to, uh, reintroduce the, uh, zoning ordinance for Airline Park Estate that we had delayed until the UDC had been approved. I'd like to bring that back on December, I'm sorry, January fifth.
July third.
July third. That's what I said.
Next, the next meeting, okay.
December?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Let me see if she's ready.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a motion, second, to, what was the name of that?
It was the Airline Park Estates Rezone.
Okay. And we're going to add it to the June of July the third, two thousand eighteen? Okay. We have a motion, a second. Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder where I'm at again. Item number three under new business. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the institution of exappropriation proceedings pursuant to a local services agreement executed between the Parish of Bossier and the City of Bossier City against the property located at twenty-one twenty-four and twenty-one thirty Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, more particularly described in the attached exhibit A in connection with the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Project, AKA the Arthur A. T. Parkway Extension Project and the Hamilton Road Improvement Project with overpass over the Union Pacific Railroad. First and final reading, or first reading, I'm sorry. That's a first reading.
It does say first and final reading.
It's, it's just a first reading.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for public utilities. First and final reading.
Some move. Second.
Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communications officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
Some move. Second.
Discussion. Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote, council.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one clerk, type S one, for the Public Works Department. First and final reading.
Some move. Second.
Discussion. Comments? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two labor one for Public Works Department. First and final reading.
Some move. Second.
Discussion. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey, is your light still flashing? Mr. Irwin, is your light still flashing? Thank you. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of ten firemen to provide manpower for a fifth ambulance in the City of Bossier City. First and final reading.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Approve appointment of H.B. Brule to the Metropolitan Planning Commission to replace Walter Buckmaster. Term effective June nineteenth, twenty eighteen, and will expire June first, twenty twenty-two.
Some move. Second.
Discussion.
Uh, just a comment, Mr. President.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is a highly qualified individual. He wanted to be here today, but he was, I think, out of the city today. But anyway, uh, he would've been here. He's, uh, he works for the Airbo- Global Strike Command, but he has volunteered to take over this position, and they'll be very impressed with him when you meet him.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Approve parade permit for Airline High School Homecoming Parade, September twentieth, twenty eighteen.
Some move. Second.
Now, surely, you want to comment on this.
Need a date or anything like that, huh? You weren't...
Ain't voted yet.
All right. We, we have a motion made and a second. Uh, no comment from Airline. Let's vote.
So, thank you.
Okay. Please cast your vote.
Elect a vice president for the term July first, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Like to make the motion that we nominate Scott Irwin for vice president.
Second.
Do we need to close?
Yeah, we, we're just gonna vote up or down?
Okay.
Okay, we have a number need. Mr. Irwin, please cast your vote, council. Anamis, congratulations.
Elect a president for the term July first, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
I make a motion that, uh, we elect Mr. Jeff Free president for this term.
With supervision. A lot of it.
Adult.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Please cast your vote, council.
Thank you for voting for yourself, Mr. Free.
Thank you.
Thought about it, though. You saw the ball, right? Thank you, guys.
All right. Congratulations to both, uh, Mr. Irwin and Mr. Free. And any announcements? Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, Mr. President and council. Uh, as most y'all know, we're losing our outstanding public information officer at the end of the month, but we're very fortunate to, uh, hire a qualified replacement for him. And chief, would you introduce our new public information officer and also city public information officer? Chief, or... Pay attention, chief. Information officer.
They want you to come introducing your new PO.
Think we're all...
Here's you. Tracy.
A little bit of, chief, a little bit about our background before coming up.
Real bow.
My name is Tracy Landry. I'm, I'm really excited to be here, to be a part of Bossier City. I come from Saint Mary Parish. I was the pe- public information officer there for about six years. Prior to that, I have about a decade of experience in, uh, newsroom, uh, business from, all the way from covering the stories, filming, to sitting at the desk, to making the decisions on whether or not to run a story and how to run a story. So, I have a lot of background in both law enforcement and news media. Again, I'm so happy to be here and to look forward to working with everyone.
Great job, chief.
I was gonna say, that's, that's exactly what I was gonna say, but we, that's a test. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Landry, welcome to Bossier City. Thank you for being a part of the city. Any other announcement or comments? Meeting stands adjourned.